This conference will now be recorded.
First item of business is considering approval of consent agenda items. First item of business is considering approval of consent agenda items.
Madam Mayor, I'd make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
We have a motion and a second. Will the clerk please call roll?
Bishop?
Yes.
Malott?
Yes.
Shriver?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Next up is requests or comments from the public. There being none, we'll move on to item three, Consider Resolution 2022-04, Adopting the 2022 Updates to the Wyandotte County Emergency Operations Plan.
Are you going to add in who is going to take the chief is, both of our chiefs are out this evening for differing reasons. So we apologize for that. So.
Mayor and counsel, if you remember with this item was first discussed at our meeting two weeks ago. Following that meeting, the decision was made to table that until this meeting. So you all had a chance and more of an opportunity to review the red line version of that plan that was sent out March 1st. The resolution in the packet essentially adopts the plan with the changes that have been presented in the red line version. Matt May from Wyandotte County Emergency Management is here to answer any of the questions you might have about that. I'm actually going to turn it over to Mr. May now to have him be ready for questions.
Madam Mayor, Commissioner, I stand ready for your question.
I did take quite a lot of time in reviewing the plan and did have some questions. I printed out just some sheets of concern that I had with either the base plan or ESF 8. And I just kind of wanted to run them by you because you have spent a lot more time on this than I have. And you would be able to answer those. Anytime that we're looking at emergency plans and our Supreme Court's spoken to this a little bit is when we're in a state of emergency is when we really have to watch out for constitutional and personal rights because that's the time that those can get stepped over. And so that's generally what I look out for is making sure that our rights as citizens are still intact. And so the first thing that stood out to me on the base plan and council, you'll have this, it says base plan at the top. And then we're at page 42 and 43. Mayor CEO may issue any order deemed necessary for efficient and effective management of the incident. The declaration of state of local disaster emergency should provide for the protection of life or property for the general public health and welfare, including but not limited to. And then it goes on to several bullet points. And again, it's including and not limited to, but some of these things are suspend or modify the provisions of any resolution if strict compliance thereof would in any way prevent, hinder, or delay necessary action in disaster response. Another one is terminate or suspend any process, operation, machine, device, or event that is or may negatively impact the health, safety, or welfare of persons or property within the county. And then the last bullet point in this section, not the last one, but the one that I really stood out to me is issue any and all other orders or undertake such other functions and activities that the county reasonably believes is required to protect the health, safety, welfare, persons, or property within the county, or otherwise preserve the public peace, or abate, clean up, or mitigate the effects of a disaster. And so my concern in reading that, these are from the base plan, is there's not a balance there. It, there's not a cap on these when it says any and all, or any process or event. I don't see an exception for religious gatherings or anything like that. And so that was my concern. I didn't know if there's verbiage somewhere that I missed that put a limit on what that one elected official can do.
I think what I can offer, and these plans are written in this way intentionally. Every event is different and we never know what's going to come in front of us that we won't have time to think through, discuss, do all the things that we like to do in our processes, and I do too personally. Sometimes we just have to move quickly. And I think the intent was to give us the maximum latitude, but also with an understanding that when time allows, when the opportunity presents itself, to think through what those requirements, restrictions might be and balance as we do, as you do, all the time for your citizens between this impact and this regulation. And I think we leave ourselves open with the understanding that every best effort will be made to do that. That's never really, in my wheelhouse personally, or in my positions. It always gets escalated up to the elected officials and the senior leadership. And so I can tell you that great discussion goes on, even in the heat of battle, about the good versus the better. And I think that's why they're written that way. It's pretty stock language, to be honest with you. You'll see it in thousands of plans everywhere, just to make sure we don't tripper over our own feet by, you know, hamstringing this from something that makes sense to everybody. But now we've got to stop and change the rules. And so I think that's the intent. But I would also tell you, I understand your concerns. Is there any particular language you would like me to look towards? This is going to be difficult because it really puts a challenge into our timing and process. The state is undermined on me a lot. This is probably a long-term discussion, to be honest. And I would love to say to you, can we look at this in the next revision, which is actually going to come in two years, not five? So I'd be happy to sit down and talk all of that through, either as a group or individual, and see what we can come to that would be comfortable.
Well, and this is just on the base plan. And so I'll have other questions as we get into some of the ESFs. And I wasn't able to look at all of them, but there's a lot there. As you know, there's a lot to review. But I think just, just not having caps on that. I think we've seen over the last couple of years that a lot of times government role is to act quickly, which there are some times that we do, but they don't retract quickly at all. And so, and so there's a quick mandate or a quick knee jerk reaction. And then they are not nearly as quick to say, okay, that was an overstep. And we're still dealing with some of those. And that's my concern. I would like to work toward verbiage that says, so long it does not conflict with constitutional, personal rights, or a time limit or something within those. And I'd see if anyone on the council might have other, other concerns with the base part of this plan. And then we'll go on to ESF.
While you're looking, I do want to ask a question. What triggers some of those actions that were raised? What's the triggering?
So in a situation like these types of things where I understand counties pass, counties pass resolutions are different than our resolution at the county is a law, would be the equivalent of our ordinance. So that gets confused sometimes about what it's a resolution. What's, what's the triggering hype? I mean, is it, has to be of a certain amount where the state or the feds are going to set? I mean, we have a little Michael Burden in Edwardsville doesn't necessarily justify. I don't know if, and there's probably some language in there. I don't know if that would help, you know? So when would this occur? When could something like this?
I think the first and foremost thing to understand is that none of this comes into play until an emergency declaration is made. And that's a decision, again, that's not made lightly. But it's, it's done to allow certain movement quickly, to make sure that we do the best thing we can for citizens. And so none of this is in play indefinitely. Most of the time, last two years being a huge exception. Most of the time, our emergency declarations are no more than seven days. Seven days, everything goes back to normal.
Well, and, and that's what I, a couple of years ago, I totally would have understood that. But in this last few years, we've seen the emergency declarations extended and then extended and then extended primarily just to get federal funding. And so at that same line, they were able to use the, the powers given to them under emergency, under the emergency plans to restrict gatherings or people's freedoms.
Actually, almost all of those were done totally outside of this plan. They have, those were health orders. They have nothing to do with the emergency operations plan.
Well, that, well, first, before we get to some of the health orders, did anyone else on the council have questions about the base plan?
On the base plan 2.2.7, this is mayor CEO. I'm assuming that is mayor CEO of Wyandotte County slash UG?
No, that means any mayor. In other words, we have three potentially, right? Okay, so this, this plan applies at each of the level of governments as they require. If something happened that was, you need to Edwardsville and Edwardsville wanted to activate the EOC, I'm here. I'm ready to do that. We can do it physically here. EOC is nothing more than a resource. I can set up my EOC and run it. We can put your people in it. You can put our people from the county, because that's probably where some resources are going to come from. Public Works, for example, will, will bring in whoever we need to, to make the response effective. So that is not UG CEO mayor. It's a mayor.
Just to clarify though, if the county were to address, issue the state of emergency, then it would be the county mayor that overrides everything.
Potentially, yes. But, but the intent is always, and I think it says this in the base plan, and forgive me, I can't cite it, I don't have it in front of me, is that the intent is always to work together collaboratively to come to a decision about direction of motion, types of response, allocation of resources. We never have all the stuff we need, right? So all those discussions can take place. I'm deliberately trying to build in the space that I have, place to physically do that. But we can now, we're so adept now at doing it virtually, we could even do it that way. And I'm getting better at that with the technology that we have. So I would say to you, it's really interpreted more broadly instead of so narrowly as it might be able to be interpreted. And I think you'd be spot on at least of what my intention is.
Yeah, and in working, working together, I feel like that's just something that generally Edwardsville feels like the UG has stepped over in a lot of ways and we don't really have a voice at the table on most issues. And when we looked at Cares funding and all the different things that have come up, the UG does whatever they want. And then we're basically given whatever they feel is deemed necessary. And so that's, that's kind of the lens through which I view a lot. Unfortunately, that comes through the county to us. And so that's why I'm looking at this and I'm going, okay, how can the UG, how are they going to overstep this? How are we going to, what do we need to watch out for this time? And it has nothing to do with you or your office, since they're the ones making the decision. That's just kind of the lens at which, through which I view it. When we look at ESF 8, our first one I'm looking at is 2.4.5 Legal Authorities. Governmental responsibilities for public health extend beyond voluntary activities and services to include addition authorities such as quarantine, mandatory immunizations, laws, and regulatory authorities. That I, the mandatory, I feel like was concerning and would be to a lot of the folks of Edwardsville in not having personal freedom over their own medical decisions.
Want to phrase this carefully, because I understand your concern. I've never seen that happen. Now, I've only been doing this for about 30 years. But I would tell you that I really do understand your concern. I appreciate it. I think the last time to be like that is during an emergent event. We need to be collected. We need to be together. We need to be supporting each other. That's my personal opinion. I don't sit in the top floor. I sit in the basement. So, but in the meantime, I'll facilitate whatever decisions come brought to me. And so I can tell you that I think the intent is always to work collaboratively. But you're talking about pieces that really is outside the realm of emergency management. And as we define it, both within the state and within the county. These are health issues that are driven by the Health Department and the Local Board of Health.
Right. And I understand that and agree to an extent, especially when we're talking about a tornado response or something along those lines. I would just ask potentially, however, if it's not necessary, then couldn't we omit it from the document instead of leaving it in there, considering that it wouldn't be necessary for such response?
I think the intention, and in fact, we even at the county level don't manage that language. That comes from the state. And so short of changing state statute, it was an attempt to reflect that accurately. That's the best I can offer you. Now, taking it out, I probably won't just because you asked. But I would say I'll take it back to the ESF 8 group and we can have a discussion about it. That's how I do all of this.
And that's, that, I would appreciate that. I would feel comfortable before signing off on it. And because I've looked at 65119 and 65202 pretty extensively, and those don't include the verbiage of mandatory immunizations in those two state statutes. And so I think potentially they would be able to, to take that part out. Did anyone else have a question on?
I think there's great concern. Anytime we see the words mandatory, required. Those are a couple of key words that I've looked at and documents stay the same, documents basically are the foundation. But the politicians who administer them change and change dramatically. And so the document that is the underlying document, it's important that it doesn't give unfettered authority to any one individual or a small group of individuals. I think that's, for me, would be the main concern. And I, I actually see some things in here that were violated during the COVID. Isolation of suspected infectious patients is a primary function of hospitals. And, and there's a couple, there's another place where it says that you are to quarantine infected people. We quarantined uninfected people. So it's been violated in our latest episode, which, which just, it's the politicians that implement these. And if we don't rein in the politicians like our founding fathers said, you end up with a dictatorial situation, which this leads to the possibility of a dictatorial situation.
If you, if you even move on to page 26 of the ESF 8, under vaccination, that part again says vaccination will be required when the presence of a disease can be mitigated by the administration of a vaccine to possible tertiary contacts. I don't know if I said that right, but contacts of contacts to prevent further spread of some diseases. And again, that's, will be required, not, I mean, I wouldn't even be comfortable with maybe required. I think that required is, is a concerning one. Every individual is different, has different reactions to different injections and medications in their body. And so I think unless we're taking on the liability of forcing or mandating medications on individuals, which I don't believe any government entity will, then I think that's probably stepping beyond what we should. Page 27, both mass prophylaxis dispensing and mass vaccination sections can be used for a variety of public health emergencies, from small outbreaks requiring post-exposure countermeasures of a small number of people, to large county metrowide outbreaks that require PEP of most of the Wyandotte County population. 28 was a little bit, a lot concerning. Page 28, this is under the section of considerations and assumptions. And this talks about our, our children. Wyandotte County is responsible for dispensing to all persons under custodial or incarcerated status. Schoolchildren and children in licensed childcare facilities could be dismissed to go home as they would with any other emergency disaster. However, if it is determined that those children were exposed at school or are at very high risk for being exposed, they will receive countermeasure by the school nurse or public health nurse, or be transported in coordination with the EOC and Public School District to the nearest pod. Information regarding the specifics of that are in the Public Health MCDD. And nowhere in there do I see parental consent, parents signing off on rights of treatment or anything like that. I feel like that is vital. I understand in some emergency situations, if there's a chemical agent or something like that where they need treated immediately, and those are some of the emergencies that we're preparing for, there's not time to call and do paperwork. But that possibly could, could be handled at enrollment. If we're talking about immunization, vaccinations, medical treatment, that's not, this needs to happen in five minutes or someone's going to die, then I think we do need to take the time and have parental consent and paperwork.
And again, I would suggest to you, most of the time, we're not going to be under an emergency decree, which allows us to enact any of this.
I agree, but we've been under one for several months in a row where a lot of this is.
720 days, exactly.
You know, to the. Right. And, and so you get it. I think you understand our concern. And a lot of times the emergency, state of emergency is extended just for funding, where all of this could be used and abused during that time. And again, I know it's not you. It's people sitting in chairs like us. Yeah. And, and there I think is a lot of concern in as well. The, the last thing that I'll bring to your attention tonight is just on page 36. And this is where the local health officer may consider closing of large public gatherings and venues to mitigate and spread of, to mitigate the spread of disease. It doesn't have any, any verbiage that exclude religious gatherings or church there or, or things that would be protected by the constitution. There's no timeline on that. And so that could be for long amounts of time. We're generally in something like our situations, we tornado, something like that, make a building unsafe. We'd be looking at a very short timeline. So I think a lot of the concerns I have on here are constitutional, personal rights, medical freedom, and then just blank checks of opportunity with no restraints and no capped out timelines on those.
I think we're a little jaded to the two weeks to flatten the curve by our politicians and our scientists and so forth. And here we are, would you say 720 days later? And so I.
And I would tell you, the vast, vast majority of the time to do that is to make sure that we get, we collectively as a county, including yourselves, are to get, get the resources that are due to us. And that's really the reason for having it. The state chose to do away with one. I really wish they hadn't. It would have simplified this process. But the national declaration stays in place as long as ours does and theirs does. Then we can continue to put our hand, I can tell you, I think we're in excess of $4 million to cover expenses that have already been paid out. This is a repayment process that we go through called public assistance.
And, and you might not be the one to ask the question for this because it's a lot of county health department. But would some of those expensive to be paid out be billboards up and down I-70 and keeping vaccination centers open for months at a time with empty parking lots? And I just feel like some of the money that we're wanting reimbursed for is just the government bleeding money at this point to say, we need to keep getting it. And, and I know that as a county and as a city, it's great to get those funds in. Those are still our tax dollars. And so at some point, we've got to close the wound and say enough's enough. And our budget and our kids and our economy matters. And so I just feel like there's, I know this doesn't make your job easier. And I am generally kind of the pain in the butt up here. But in just looking out for those personal rights of folks, and, and again, that's, it's not you. It's, it's the people that are given the authority in these that, that could abuse those. And unfortunately, we've seen that done on a national level, on a state level, on a county level over the last couple of years makes me a little, a lot concerned in having some of those addressed. I would greatly appreciate before we just sign off on it. And I hopefully can get some more feedback if anyone has anything else to share from the council.
Matt, what's the process of getting these changed or getting these edited? Is that what we're talking about?
Typically, because we usually do this document on a five-year cycle, we meet with the EGSF group individually. We provide them with the changes that, first, we look at the state's planning standards. Those are what triggered us lately. And say, here's the document with those changes in it that we know we have to make to qualify as a, as a plan. Everything else that's in it really is a local decision made amongst all the parties who are invited to that process. And we manage that process as best I can. I invite as many people as I can think of. Where I don't know a particular individual, I pick someone from senior leadership.
Right.
Whether it's, you know, senior staff, whomever, hoping that they will forward that on to the appropriate parties. To be very honest with you, I know it isn't as large a response as I would like. But I would love to have this kind of feedback in that venue, in that forum, where we can do it in the light of day, not just one small group, but the entire county represent. And, and put that forth in front of everybody and work that language till everybody's happy. Because it is a balance. And it is a balance for and from and to people I don't have the knowledge to support. I'm the guy who juggles the balls. I can't tell you what colors they are. So that's, that's the process generally. I, I, I can't think of a better way to do it, to be honest with you. Because they can drag on for the entire five-year period between cycles. But, but what we usually do is we spend a year doing that. We meet, EGSF meets once a month. We have a couple where we have to double up. And we get all 15 of them done in a year. And so we will be doing this again, not next year, but the year after. And I would really love to have all of these discussions out on that table. And we do that by ESF. So concerns with things that are in ESF 8, we will talk specifically about ESF 8. The base plan is kind of an open forum. And usually what I do, you'll notice there's leadership or coordinators from each group. There are people who I know, know the people under, in the next layer down. So we ask them to come and look at that base plan and see where those are. So maybe there's language we can put in there that tightens that up, that makes people feel more comfortable about it. I'm good with that. I'm awesome. It's, it's just a matter, it takes a lot of time to do that. But I think it's the right, is do it out in the open with time. And we did that with this. We spent a year doing it, and then we unfortunately spent another year putting in additional changes to state ass. So, but we always, I always send that out, even if I can't bring the group together, which is what's been difficult over the last few years. I always send it out electronically. Does everybody take the time to look through it like you have? Probably not. They look at the piece that concerns them individually. You know, if you're a search and rescue guy, you look at the search and rescue piece. So that's kind of how that all works. And it's, it's, it's been pretty decent. Doesn't mean we get everything, no. I would say that most of these changes, I would have to put in that substantive category that I can't make without taking it back to the county for sign off. So if we don't do this, I will probably move ahead with what I have because they have signed off on it. But I would offer to you that within the next 12, 18 months, we'll have an opportunity to dig deep into this.
Is there anybody from Edwardsville or Bonner Springs on these committees?
Everybody's invited. They don't always show.
Everybody's invited.
In every jurisdiction, it's invitations to every one of these ESF meetings. Like you said, I may not know the right person to send it to, but I'll always send it to somebody plus the time there might, when I don't know, and say, please forward this on to the right person. So.
I would say we certainly, I certainly have.
I would, I would say we, we certainly, I certainly have been at, at most of those. I've attended a couple of times over the years, but typically uh, probably the one that there most is Tim. Cause he's kind of our emergency, local emergency management coordinator. Uh, he probably attends more than anybody, but I, but I think Matt is correct. I mean, if it's. If it's something that's around uh, public works, you know, we might see our public works director or a fire or a thing. Around public health, I mean, I, I mean, I realize state, I mean, generally would we probably get that engaged in public health? Not because we, we don't provide public health in the sense of. I mean, cities aren't public health officers, right? I mean, even if you have a city public health officer, you're really subject to the county and the state public health officers. Uh, you know, we don't do, you know, some cities will do like restaurant inspections locally and so. They use their public health officer to do those types of things. So I can't, I can't speak for which meetings that we've attended. Uh, I know we have participated, certainly not at all of those. Uh, and you know, that's how I would ask that. I, I, I would ask Matt a, and. So some of these, the, the, I mean, a lot of this on the C S F eight. And I, and I personally did go through them. I mean, are, is this, some of these, is this new language or is this existing language? I'm just, I'm just trying to understand it right before you put it group. I mean, is this language that's been there in this? I'm still not really certain where the state came in this is somewhat. You have to update these specific items and not be focused on. And is this language that may certainly need to be addressed, but have been language that existing right now in the plan of the doc?
The, the majority of the ones that you pointed out, to my recollection. Have been here for a long time. I think that obviously our current situation's put a light on it and I get that. Um, I will tell you that some of the state's planning standards changes have absolutely nothing to do with us. Uh, for example, they really. Struggled with firefighting, especially wildland firefighting, something we don't really see, probably won't ever see. Uh, when we've got as many fire hydrants as we have in this county, you know, the likelihood of something like that getting away from us is really unusual. So one of the things they asked for is for us to identify whether called dip sites. Places where you can go a lake or a pond where you can drop a, and I don't know where this terminology comes from, please don't ask. The Bambi bucket hanging underneath the helicopter that picks up, you know, X amount of water and then they drop it on the fire. I get that. But it really doesn't apply to us. So in a couple of cases, I asked for specific exemptions because it just doesn't apply. What I have a challenge with is getting caught between the state saying. Put in X Y Z and then locally getting kicked back on that because it really doesn't. Happen in my level. That's going to be decisions can be made. Senior elected officials at the state level. And I sit here with. A stack of paperwork and proposed amendments and things that will put most of us to sleep. Uh, that I'm trying to dig through so that I understand what's going on at the state. And it's really challenging the last few weeks to keep track of what's going on. So I understand the concerns I do. Um, I will also tell you that those meetings, being on those calls or being in. Last, last two years, we've done them obviously uh, virtual. But even not being on those calls still doesn't leave you out. You're always going to get an email. You're always going to get an attachment. Here's the document. Even if you don't have time or can't go to the meeting, if you have time to review the document. And you send it back to me with changes, again, try to have changes turned on. We could see those. We'll talk about them in the rest of the group. And then we'll adopt the ones that make sense for everybody. And then that document goes back out. So if there's still concerns, we'll circle back on it. I haven't had to do that more than once. But, but we will, because I want it to where everybody can at least. Appreciate it, right? May not get it to where every single person's happy. But we're going to get it to where everybody can kind of roll with it. And that's really what I'd like to see. So. I would suggest to you, most of these changes that you're talking about are pretty substantive. They're going to require going back to the county to get that change made. That's in resolution. And uh, and I'm really in a, I'm already a year late, mostly because of what the state did to us. But it's their timeline I'm trying to make. Uh, and that's a statutory requirement on my.
And now the. You may misunderstood. I thought we were doing this early imperatively because it hadn't been quite five years.
We are correct. We are. But they're not holding us to that timeline. They're holding us to the one they made up before they actually made the changes. So, and part of that problem has been, excuse me, the state has gone through a great deal of change in that department. In K D A, Kansas Division of Emergency Management. And they're still trying to get their feet wet. In the meantime, they had changes that. Don't even touch any of what we've talked about tonight. And some, like I said, that we didn't like apply to us when we asked for exemption. But for the most part, they were easy changes to make, but we had to make them. And then I felt obligated to go through this process. And make sure that everybody's seen them, just like you've seen them. I mean, we could, we could easily adopt this without doing that. I don't want to do that. That's not what I want. So.
You mentioned senior level political officials. Who would those be that would have the most impact on this document?
Certainly the executive branch does indirectly through what goes through K D A. Uh, Kansas Division Emergency Management is overseen by the Adjutant General's Office. That's a position that's a, a mutual appointment between the Department of Defense and the executive branch. So that's where a lot of this is driven from. I can't, without looking at these individually and going back and looking at the list of changes we got from the state. This most recent round can tell you exactly which ones might apply, but I don't think very much. Now, here again, particularly in E S F A. Vast majority of what comes out of that comes from the, again, outside my area. I just take what they give me and then we try to massage it if it needs to be massaged. So um, whether that comes from a local decision or from a state statutory requirement, I'd have to go back and ask my E S F Department.
Our action tonight, Matt, and, and I mean. So the, the plan is a county plan. It's in coordination with state law, state requirements. And at least as our language, it says to adopt and endorse the Wyandotte County Emergency Plan. So. I, I, I understand the purpose, but, but what is our real role? Do we, do we have? Do we have to adopt it as our plan? I mean, is that part of the state?
You don't have to.
Or are we endorsing it, supporting it? I mean, I'm just trying to uh, you know, what is our? I mean, I think we want to be part of it, think part of a county, you know, engaged in it. I'm just trying to, I don't want to. You know, I, I think you've heard some concerns tonight. I, I, I feel you'll address those concerns going forward. I think also we have this, you know, we, we don't want to hold something up where, where the state's saying to you, you have to do this or else or the county. You know, we don't, we don't want to create a problem either. So I'm just trying to. Understand maybe how, what options we have or how we want it maybe as, as a body. I mean, are we?
Here's the biggest.
I mean, again, I, I know we're supporting a county plan, really the counties. It's a county-wide plan that, that covers us. It may or may not in any such, you know, it may cover something in our city. It could be an event that never touches our city. It could touch all three cities. So I'd be. I, I'm not, I mean, y'all have, the county must adopt it, correct? I, I know we have a U G, but I mean, the county is the adopting body of these operations.
That's correct.
Johnson or Leavenworth.
Yeah. The, the only caution I would give you is if you choose not to act on it. And we proceed forward, I'd submit it to the state as a final copy. My concern is if there was an opportunity for some of these other funding strategies to come along. You might be left out. Because they might say, well, you didn't adopt the plan. I certainly know that in the hazard mitigation planning process, that is exactly how that works. I'm not sure that we've ever encountered a subdivision within a county. Not adopting and then not being able to provide funds to, I would certainly not allow that if I could avoid it. I don't think that's appropriate, but I also would say this is an opportunity. At least I feel like I've done my best to give everyone an opportunity to have a voice in this. And, and I want it to be the way you want it. I may not forget that. But I also would tell you, the biggest piece in this lots of times is that. Plan being adopted. Puts you in or out. If the county doesn't sign off on this plan. Nothing happens today. But I will guarantee you the funding stops. And however you feel about that funding, those are dollars that ultimately come back out of our pockets locally that we could have avoided. All right, because they came from the Fed pockets now. Is that left pocket going to the right pocket? Yes, I hear you. But um, but I think. Sometimes those are opportunities missed. And I hate to see them go by because we get missed so often. I cannot tell you how hard we fought for restitution money. For the damage that was done to Turkey Creek where it goes into the call. Um, that was a significant amount of money. Couldn't ignore. We had to fix it. And unfortunately, the feds chose not to do it. Why? Because we had one small crack in the wall that we didn't fix. They looked for reasons not to pay off. And I would hate to have that happen with this situation. So if it's something you can tolerate for another year or two. And we can go back and have meetings where we look at E S F eight and we get this language the way you need it to be. And I would tell you, my guess, based on looking, what I'm looking at on a daily basis and speaking. We're probably going to see a lot of motion that address exactly the same concerns. On a much higher level and might even go to court and be addressed there. And that might or might not set some of this either in a better place. To someplace where we can try to address it in this document.
Mike, would there be any way you could attach the concerns that the mayor is bringing up to the resolution? That would voice Edwardsville's. Concerns with this and to see that it would be studied. And acted upon for the next, and the next go-around on the two-year go-around on that. Would that be something that could be done? And then we can move on and adopt this?
I think we could probably add either in the whereas or potentially in a section. Uh, you know, one in a section that says uh. You know, that the, the city of Edwardsville uh. Should submit in uh. So have submit changes, participate in the rewrite of E S F for the next twenty-four months or something to that. Whatever that timeframe is, I think that's possible. We can add that. Need to clean the language up a little bit, but we can do that. I mean, if you're, if you're supported by the council, you want to have, you understand the whereas or so more. First of all, it's a resolution, not a law. Clear there. And, and the whereas is a really kind of that, that kind of, or the laying out the overall page. Where the section is saying we, that through our power of resolution, we're saying that we adopted. Twenty twenty-two issues. Second base is that, right, just. We want to have a clause that is specific to E S F eight or some. We don't want to complicate it that much. I mean, I, I do think, I will say this. Matt has uh. Been very helpful in working with us. Due to pandemic before that, when we got federal funds back. Uh, and I can't remember what the event was, but it was winds, storm, damming. I think. I remember uh, having to help, I mean, I would say eighty or ninety thousand, seventy to ninety thousand dollars. Uh, that we got back, they didn't. A lot of times I know, damming, we should receive a lot of drainage trees, things like that. We know, we got a lot of support. I have a level of faith that Matt and what he do, he says that he will, he will incorporate us into that. And, and I think as a staff, and we're hearing from you that this, you know, this is a high priority or a higher priority. Then maybe we would have given it. Lots of things on the table and you know, is, is this one, you want to spend more focus time with me, certainly. Certainly assign somebody specifically to attend a participate and report back on. E S F eight specifically and, and those related issues. However, you would like to do that. I, I think staff hears the concern and, and we're prepared to. You know, participate in that with, with uh, Matt and his, his team. And we will have somebody, you know, be assigned to go specifically to that. Council members, I assume, are welcome to attend those meetings as well.
Anybody who, all voices are.
That's a, you know, that's your direction relative to adoption of this plan now and then. We've always been part of it. We just haven't necessarily taken. That particular area hasn't really probably risen to the top as high as things like firefighting, even wildland firefighting. You have, you know, I mean, we're part of a task force team and some of those things. So probably fire and EMS and public works and. You know, some of the things we just don't have resources to participate in, right? You know, sheltering. I mean, we do some around that. We have, you know, a couple of facilities, so. Tangentially, we probably have not been engaged in public health because.
Just to clarify on this, if, if our city doesn't sign off on the county plan and money comes in through the county. Then we wouldn't get funding if we had a tornado or something here?
I, I have to. I don't know that for a fact. That is my concern. Because the one thing I can tell you about what's, why I call it the P A process, public assistance, is what it's called. And the public doesn't mean the general public. It means public entities. Every time I touch it, the rules are different. Today, the rule might be not a problem. Tomorrow, the rule could be, no, they're not signed off. It's not happening and it won't come from us and it won't come from the county. This will be a dictate that will come from FEMA via the state.
What I'm concerned about.
But we can't apply, we, so if there is a disaster.
Yeah.
That impacts us, whether it impacts the whole county, us, parts of Johnson, parts of Wyandotte. For us to receive federal money. Under, I mean, there has to be a declaration of a disaster at the state and federal levels. And all of that process goes through the county emergency management system. Because they are the body that is uh, charged with that. So we can't make typically a direct request to the federal government to get that funding. Under a declaration, which we go through emergency management at the county level. Who packages up things that may be coming from the other cities, entities, whoever that might be. Sends that up to the state coordinator who then gives it to the federal coordinator and, and that's the process.
So would our previous plan that we're still under cover us until we get it worked out or not?
No, it's going to expire.
When does that expire?
Uh. I think it's April fifteenth. Please don't hold me that. Susan's not here to keep my head straight, but it's soon. It's soon.
That's the reason for this.
Because that's why I'm, I'm asking for motion on it, only because I don't want anybody else to know. Uh, and uh, I want this to be as best documented as can be for you. And it might be that we just have to take it the way it is today. Knowing that if it's not substantive changes, and I would love to have the changes you're asking for and writing. So I can make sure I've been taking obvious notes, but. Sometimes my notes and my scribbling, it doesn't always work out. So uh, I would love to see those in specific. And I can look at those and we can see which ones I can make changes without consideration for going back. Um, I'm going to submit that document. We're going to turn right around next year. We're going to go through the process. So, so that we can by twenty-four turn in a finished document, again, applying to changes from the state.
Would it be um, appropriate, and this might be a question for Mike and, and our legal counsel, Lisa, if um, we. Adopted that had stipulations where we, what I don't want to do is sell out the health of our people potentially for, for money.
I think there's two separate things we can do at the same time.
Okay.
One is to adopt it if you was to do that with the understanding there will be a whereas clause. The city desires to make its concerns regarding E S F eight, however we want to put that. Um, known and as discussed um, during this process. And then you would direct staff, council members, to participate and work towards resolving. Those issues for the next iteration of this, this document. to participate and work towards resolving those issues for the next iteration of this document.
Could we have anything that pulls us out or gives our even governing body the opportunity to represent its people should something happen, say, next fall, we have a health thing and they say, okay, mandatory vaccinations for everybody. Well, this isn't going to have the new one done yet. We won't be ready for a new one. So do we have anything that even our governing body could have to represent our people and saying our city is not part of that?
A lot of those can depend on what that order looks like, if there's opt-out provisions, what the nature of the disaster is. And and what we can do within that process. Without knowing all of those, I can't say yes or no, but, you know, those are certainly things that can be looked at. And also things that, again, for the future version of this in two years, to look at that. Now that we have all of those in our heads, you know, with what we've been through, we know what questions to ask or answer.
And I guess I'm just, I'm just kind of wondering for this two years, like, what can we do to just protect our folks for this two years? To try to be in compliance or or to have our coverage if we have a tornado or something like that come through? I think it's a little bit strange that we're part of the county, we're paying into the county, and then the county would be like, oh, well, we're not going to help you if a tornado comes. If you don't sign off on the mandatory vaccinations.
Again, not a county decision.
That would be, I think that's the point is, I mean, I don't think the county, I mean, I I don't, I don't believe under the EO, that with the emergency planning statutes federal and state level, that they could just universally say, well, we're not going to give you money when there's been a national, a federal
That's concerning. It doesn't seem to really make sense that they would do that. Oh, you didn't sign off on this.
But the feds, but the feds might say, or the state might say, since you chose not to participate in that plan by adoption, you now are not eligible for those funds. It it goes back to the old power of the purse string, right? So they they can set the eligibility.
So if we don't say we're going to mandate vaccinations, they won't give us money if we have a tornado come through?
Well, we we don't know.
Potentially, is what you're saying.
I I would say this about a resolution and the attorney may may differ. We're we're resolving, it's a resolution saying that we adopt and and endorse the Wyandotte County Plan. It's not a mandate or a law, right? If if six weeks from now, you could pass a resolution that says we oppose the Wyandotte County Plan and no longer wish to participate in it because it's not a it's not a stat, unless I mentioned, it's not a statutory requirement that the city has to, that that we're bound by that, right? I mean, that's a plan. The purpose of plans is to use it to manage and perform. And I mean, it makes sense to have good plans out there. It sets up, you know, if it's a fire, who's in charge? If it's a, if it's a, you know, a major, if there's a prison break at at the state jail and there's a hundred, you know, prisoners on the loose, well, who's going to be the in charge people? Obviously, it's going to move over their law. We have a whole bunch of trees down. It may fall to public work. So it's really outlining the, yeah.
The 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 major concern I have just because of the last couple of years is that the health part. And so that's what I just want to make sure is we're not selling out our people for potential money. And that and that's what I was hoping that that at least might be able to address a little bit.
I just, again, without knowing what's leading up to it, I don't know the ability to opt out of it. The little tiny bit that I do know when it comes to the federal regulations in this area is if they are going to provide emergency funds, they want to know that all of the players are working from the same playbook. That hopefully that the dollars are being used wisely and expeditiously and within a process. Rather than sending money knowing that someone can do it this way, someone can do it this way. And and that's just not the way it goes. So that's wanting to know who the players are and they've agreed that, yes, we're going to do that. And Mike is right. This is a resolution. It is a written expression of your desires and thoughts and what you're going to do, what you approve of, what you don't.
So we can maybe have where the revisions of ESFA, but could we also include verbiage to protect people's constitutional rights and medical freedom?
I don't know that you can do anything, certainly within a resolution that's going to bind the entire emergency plan. And I don't know how the state or federal government would look at a preemptive opt-out. Have you truly adopted it? I don't know.
It seems to me that at the present time, we have a couple of opportunities. One is we've got a deadline and Matt has a deadline. We, if if we opt out of approving it, we expose our citizens to higher taxes and liabilities they may not have had if we would agree to this. The second part of it is we've got a revision that's going to be, and you you mentioned it's a living document. And so making sure that the mayor is on your group emailing list so that she's aware of all upcoming meetings and and can participate or assign participation or whatever and be involved in the in in the future of that document. But it seems like the bigger task is communicating with the PICA. Because you can't change Topeka. You're, it's it's mandated to you, the dates and what this and a lot of the language and so forth. And so the real work is in Topeka, working with those senior level people like you were talking about, the the people behind the scenes and the political leaders, working with them to get language change and help them understand what the concerns are in citizen rights and so forth. So it seems to me in that way, we protected the financial citizens' rights at this point in time. And we've got the opportunity to influence the the language in this and so forth in the future. I don't think there's an opportunity now to change anything today without making, giving us the the potential of being excluded from from federal assistance, should there be a natural disaster or whatever. And that would be greatly concerning if we had a three million dollar national, a natural disaster. And the feds say, oh, last week we changed rules. And if you don't like it, you know, if you didn't, if you didn't sign on to it, you're not part of it. I I don't think that's a good place to be.
How about, and I was just so from what you were saying, so we could add a, we were just kind of note taking, you know, add a whereas statement to the resolution. And I'm just going to read what I wrote, right? So we, you know, but just simply something says, whereas the city, the city of Edwardsville expresses its concerns with procedures in the emergency management plan that mandate health requirements. I think that's mainly where our biggest, especially within ESFA. So we're at least we're targeting that one thing.
And we're not opting out. We're sharing concerns.
We would still, we would still in section one, say we adopted and endorsed, but we're expressing through the resolution this, we'll add an additional whereas, basically what I just read, that whereas the city expresses concern with procedures in the emergency management plan twenty twenty-two that mandates health requirements and especially within ESFA. We could add that whereas, I think at least puts it on kind of notice that this is our concern. I I think to Mr. Adams' comment, I mean, I I don't know, we we don't have time to necessarily Matt and his group, you know, to probably get all that there. And quite honestly, there may be comments that we make that the other partners, you know, the other cities and the county may not agree with and or there may be statutory, you know, I I don't know, there could be something at the state level through the department of, you know, through the health, state health departments or et cetera, that that says, well, these certain things have to be in it. I I just, I don't know.
Does Warner Springs accept it?
They are actually doing it as we speak because you both mean that the same.
Has the commissioner, the commissioners at the UG accepted it?
Yes, that's been done.
Okay.
And they're the ones that are going to be making all the decisions on it.
I I just think often we try to eat an elephant all at once. And I, this is an elephant. This is, this is a big elephant. And so I think the the, there's been a couple of things accomplished over the last couple of weeks. Matt knows that we're concerned and that we, that that he will make sure we're involved in the process in the future. And that we we also keep our citizens financially whole in the event of a natural disaster or whatever, or and and I I guess part of it is I don't trust politicians. And I'm one. And so I don't, I don't trust them. So and these are politicians are the ones who administer these rules. Or, you know, the top is, you know, the highest level. So so I would like to make a a motion that we adopt resolution twenty twenty-two oh four with that additional whereas similar to or exactly like Mike mentioned.
Can we, I'm sorry, I need to wait for can I ask a question?
Sure, sure, maybe. You have a motion.
Can we include anything? Surely it it wouldn't be in conflict of this to ensure people's constitutional rights aren't being waived. I mean, it's, we we're not allowed at a state or local level to waive someone's constitutional right. So couldn't that be a whereas?
You want that in the whereas, is that what you're saying? So expresses concern with procedures that I would say that may, yeah, that may violate either could be a different whereas or in the same, that may violate citizens consti- constitutional rights regarding mandatory health requirements. With with this, with this, so if if we rephrase the whereas, so the whereas, whereas the city expresses its concerns with procedures in the emergency man- management plan that may violate a citizen's constitutional rights by mandate, by mandating health requirements, especially within ESFA.
I'm okay with that.
So you have a motion with that addition. And we'll we'll type it up and then give a clean copy.
Give a motion in a second. Will the clerk please call roll?
Who's the second? I'm sorry.
Here.
Bishop?
Yes.
Malot?
Yes.
Schreiber?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Adam?
Yes. Matt, thank you.
Thank you, Matt. Thank you. Thank you for your time.
Reese. He's got a chair issue.
And Zach, if you, if you wouldn't mind sending Mr. May an email and thanking him for coming out twice and making himself available to answer those questions. I know it's probably hard on the spot to do that. And that was probably a lot for anybody to be up there in in going through. So I appreciate that. So it was, so item number four, consider resolution.
We've got a a chair failure. It keeps bumping his chin on the counter. I don't know if he went out to truck to get tools or what.
I don't have phone book.
Yeah, be stacking paper back this thing.
She might not be available. Well, I may invite these guys to come from now on. I don't get that response from the two chiefs, so.
Suggest the phone book. Don't worry about that thing.
Okay, item number four, consider resolution twenty twenty-two oh five regarding the initiation initiation of eminent domain proceedings for the Nandy Eighth Street Improvement Project.
I will give you the background here. I know we always take these two words, so I'm there with you. So as you know, we fight for and receive funding, or STP funding, ESF, Surface Transportation Program funding in the amount of about four point eight million dollars to reconstruct Ninety-Eighth Street from approximately Kansas Avenue to the North City Limits. There are probably fifty to sixty parcels along there, if I recall right. Parcels that we have to acquire something. It could be a temporary construction easement, permanent drainage easements, or actual right-of-way. We have some areas where the right-of-way is wide enough, but we need drainage. We have some areas where we just need temporary construction easements. But as you know, that's a kind of a formal process. We retain a right-of-way agent. So Tim Oregon, Oregon Urstons, it's the retained agent. And under his contract, there is an appraisal done of each property. And then any property whose whose value in the area needed, whether it's temporary construction or permanent, exceeds ten thousand dollars, there is a review of price. So anything over ten thousand dollars gets reviewed by another appraiser. They don't necessarily go do a whole independent appraisal. They look at it and make sure that the federal processes will follow, that the properties that they're using and everything is in its order. And so they say, yes, this appraisal is in order. I I find it to be complete and accurate. So all of that process has now been done. Every property owner had an opportunity to be, to participate or be present during the appraisal. That's a letter that goes out to them. Some choose to do it, some choose not to do it. They have that that option. Once that's done, then a a formal letter is sent to every property owner with an offer. In total, our offers are approximately two hundred thousand dollars for all the properties. Again, individual properties will be different depending on what the impact is. This project is slated for a, as early as November of this year for funding. So the federal government, I'm sure we don't want to talk about them anymore after this last thing, but they use a federal fiscal year and so those are different than the calendar year. So basically, I think they're October, September, starts their new federal fiscal year. So they, anytime after the start of fiscal year, the project could be constructed. We are technically a federal fiscal year twenty twenty-four. But we've, since we started this project, said we want to try to move this up and be prepared and ready to go. Because oftentimes, projects get moved around in this process. So if somebody's got a twenty-four project, they have to go to twenty-three, twenty-three to twenty-four. And I think it's fair to say that there's, you know, a lot of federal funds out here around ARPA that may push some of these projects up early. And we want to make sure we get in that that process as early as possible. So in this whole process, there are several steps. So again, we've done the appraisals, we've made the first offers, there's ongoing negotiations. Some properties have already agreed to that, the price for the property. Again, we're not buying all of their property. And as I was talking with the mayor the other night, when we look at, when they look at these, it's different than maybe you would do in your traditional buying a home or valuing a business. They really look at it and say, before the project, this property is worth some, some, some value, right? And after this project, whatever those impacts are to that property, does it change its value? And and quite honestly, sometimes the projects improve the property, make it maybe more sellable, more valuable. Really immaterial. They say it's valued, it's something, we're going to take this amount of property. Therefore, we're going to value that that piece at a, at a certain cost. Again, sometimes it actually improves value. And after the project's over, they can go put it on the market at a higher rate. That's nice, but we don't get that credit. So That's nice, but we don't get that credit. So we, we move this path. So all of those first steps have been done. What happens with this resolution is, and some of y'all have been through this, so I'm, I'm taking a little extra time tonight, but, but the resolution basically says is that this is a public project, which means that it is subject to the use of eminent domain, because maybe we will use eminent domain. And it basically directs the engineer surveyors to define the tracks of property that are needed and sign off on them. Technically, that's already done because we wouldn't know which projects to appraise if we didn't already have the surveys done. So it, it part of process. So the resolution does not initiate any actions in the court. It doesn't prevent any discussions, doesn't stop anything. It's the first step in the process. What we would expect is thirty, forty-five days from now, we'll come back to you. We would hope that by then, most if not all of the, of those parcels are acquired. If not, then the next step is the adoption of ordinance, which says we have these properties, we've been unable to come to a conclusion at this point. And that then authorizes your right of way agent to file a case in court. Typically, that doesn't happen right away because again, the best option is to resolve these through, through the process. We can't just negotiate and just, hey, I'll give you this and go back and forth. I mean, there's some regulatory rules about, you know, there's a value and some of the things. Generally, it's around cost of cure items. Maybe it's something that, that when the appraisers went through, they didn't know was there. We've had some unique situations. I think one I remember we had where, uh, the people, uh, you know, their concern was that there was an animal burial ground. So they buried their pets up and they didn't want the pet disturbed with. You know, they wanted to make sure we weren't going to impact that. I mean, I, I get that, but, you know, and so sometimes for stuff like that, or maybe it's a fence, or maybe it's, you know, we had a stone one time, I remember on something and it had been placed there as a memorial and they were really concerned about that. So we, you know, we try to find ways to work with it. So assuming it goes all the way through that, then it would eventually go to the court. The court then assigns three independent appraisers. Each one of them conducts their own appraisals. They have a meeting with the parties to get input. And then they make a decision and say, it's worth whatever it is. And at that point, the city, whatever the governing entity is, has to place those funds into escrow with court. That is the end of the process. I will say in my fifteen years here, uh, on a right of way project, thankfully, we've never had one go to eminent domain. We've had a couple of them file the cases and resolve them. We've had one case that actually did go through the eminent domain process, sewer project. And, you know, I think in my opinion, at the end of that process, uh, I'm not sure that landowner from a financial standpoint was, was better served than we were able to, to do with the initial appraisal or, or, you know, being able to, uh, go through, uh, the process of negotiation. So uh, again, tonight, I, I probably carried on a little bit longer. Really, this resolution just does that first step. Again, I want to reiterate, it does not, you know, force anybody in the eminent domain at this point. It doesn't create any court cases. There won't be any filings. It's a multi-step process. But if we want to be prepared for this project to go out for bid through the state process, we generally have to have the right of way all acquired about four months prior to the bid date. Because the utilities have to get in and do all their work and they're supposed to be complete prior to the bid date by at least two months, preferably more. So everybody's going, when are you going to get the right of way? We want to move our utilities. And so that, that's really where we're at. So if we want to keep this on track as a I'm going to say probably more of a, probably a late year, early first of twenty twenty-three for bid schedule. You, you definitely want to try to bid it in those months more so than in, say, a, a June or July, just because it's more a lot more activity going on. And by the time you get it all bid, then you're doing construction in the fall and then you end up with two months you can't work. And so from a timing standpoint, this really is the ideal time to go through the process. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions, but it's our recommendation to adopt resolution twenty twenty-two dash oh five.
Mike, on eminent domain, is there a certain point where if it gets narrowed down to folks who are having a hard time coming to terms with the city, can they come to, like, is there a public hearing or is there a time for them to be made aware of the situations?
Um, there, there's not necessarily a formal process. I mean, generally, we, we, quite honestly, I think y'all probably hear from them anyways. Through the more of the informal process has been my, my experience. But the only real formal process is once it's, once it's initiated at the court. So once the, he goes to court and the judge will assign three appraisers and then they will have a meeting publicly, kind of a, I don't want to say a trial, but they will have, they will set a meeting date and time for the parties to be there. They will ask questions of the party, why they think it should be valued at, at X or Y or Z. And they will physically go to those properties at some time during their process to review the property. And, and sometimes they do it on, sometimes they've done it ahead of time. Sometimes they will meet on the property. I, again, the one I know with, with the sewer, I mean, the hearing was held here in, in the training room. And then the parties went to the actual property. So everybody went through the parade, went through the legacy in the field of conditions, you know, what were the impacts, what were the issues? And that's typically what happens.
So there's not necessarily a time for an individual who might be affected to, to come to us formally?
Not formally, no. I mean, I mean, they're not somewhat, we're, we're, to some respects, want to stay, uh, independent of the process, as you know me.
Sure.
Because it, it should be, what's the value of the land? And, and we have an obligation to compensate them. Right now, I realize that's always a hard thing, you know. I, I think my land's worth X or Y. Uh, I think this, you know, I don't want, I'll just, you know, I don't want a road project. It's going to impact my land. I don't want the road project. We're, we're past that point, right? Said there's going to be a road project and we have to have, you know, X feet of, of right of way. Now, there've been times where we revised a plan because something was there and we could work with the property owner. And, you know, maybe it shortened up a, a, you know, pipeline or something like that where they would, or get discharge tiered versus farther down. And, and we worked with that. We've, quite honestly, we've done that on this one already, where from staff level, between engineering and, and the right of way, we, we felt like, hey, are there some things we could do with how far it dips down and comes back up? What if we add some fill here? That'll reduce the cut. That's going to reduce the impact of these property owners. It has impacts on cost, right? But it, it may impact the cost of the construction, but it reduces both the physical impact to that property owner, which is what they're concerned about, and may reduce the amount of right of way or easements or things that we need. And therefore, it, it can be kind of a win-win in that situation. So, so we've already been having these kind of one-on-one, you know, type meetings. And, and I can tell you, we've had, you know, somebody say, hey, I, you know, it's all vacant property, you know, it's a city interested in, you know, buying all my property and things like that. Those, you know, you have to look at those sometimes. I know we've talked about a little bit about, you know, things like trees and, and fences and generally, it's those types of things that cause the most consternation is, is around those little, I say little, they're not little when they're your property. I get it. You know, but it, it, relatively speaking, those are kind of easy to work with. I've spoken about, you know, it's a couple of trees that are, you know, if I just say, I'm going to go out here eighty feet and take everything in the right of way, but we've said, hey, that's a pretty good size. You know, that's a big tree there. Is there, could we regrade this area? It may not meet the perfect, you know, the, the perfect, just nice four-to-one slope and, and all that. Maybe we have to put a tree ring around it, things like that. So we look at that as we're going through the design process as well. Sometimes the utilities come back. Sometimes they want more space. Sometimes, you know, by the time they, they, they say, oh, well, we're, we want to be on this side of the road versus that side of the road, you know, try to work some of those utilities.
How, how many landowners are you dealing with?
I think it's a right around sixty. Okay, sixty-seven parcels. But understand, sometimes parcels are not owned. So you may have an owner that has two or three contiguous parcels. And so you're dealing with them once. Sometimes you're just dealing with maybe a small tract of land, you know, I mean, a few hundred square feet. And sometimes you're dealing with acres. So it, it, but we, I think sixties, what'd you say, sixties?
Sixty-seven.
Sixty-seven tracts that we are negotiating with.
How many have showed negative to this?
I don't know that, I, I mean, unless you, I don't, I mean, I mean, I think for the road itself, there's general support. I mean, I think it's like a lot of these projects, you know, there's support. And then when you start seeing what some of that extra is going to be, people often worry when they hear right of way is going to be eighty feet, that, oh, you mean the road's going to be right next to my house? When in reality, you know, the road's only thirty-two feet back a curve. You have the trail system, you have a lot of overhead and underground utilities.
So the majority though, the majority is in favor of the project?
I've not, I've not personally received any, just as the, I will never agree to this. I don't care if the project ever happens, you know, like said, I don't want the project. I, I haven't heard anything.
Out of about sixty landowners.
People's are right of way specialists. Engineer, they've been working really hard to communicate with these people too. So it's not like they're just throwing it out there and not talking to people yet. We've been out there showing them like, this is kind of where the lines will be and things. So it's been a positive.
I think it's been a very, you know, a, a good interaction. We, we've had several of those kinds of meetings.
I don't want to say the wrong thing, but you know, we kind of, kind of kicked ourselves on the hundred and tenth street or hundred and second street project, I don't know, three or four years ago. And I, I'd hate to go down that road again. But I think that if you're showing more positive from the public that, that uses that all the time, I think I would go ahead and, and make a motion to adopt resolution twenty twenty-two dash oh five. Second?
Okay. And, and Mike, just to clarify, our policy within cities generally to work with people and keep them out of court?
Absolutely. I mean, it's not to, I mean, at the end of the day, it's not, I'm going to tell you, it's generally not to the property owner's benefit. Right? Because they, they have to go get legal counsel. And again, appraisals are appraisals. So it's not like the court just tends to just go, you know, just give big awards. And it's not to our benefit from a, from a legal standpoint. I mean, there's obviously the political, but from, because we have to pay for those three appraisers, right? And, and those court filings, which can be ten or fifteen thousand dollars on a case. So, uh, you know, there, there, it's we, and we've done that sometimes where we've had a case where it's down and, you know, we're down to, you know, nickel, so to speak. I don't, I don't want to get in negotiations here. It's not the play. But, but you know, you start looking and going, okay, that tree's really worth a lot to you. And, and we're going to, you know, do this if you agree to that. Right? I mean, we had one where they, they're like, you know, I'm more concerned about this. And I'll give you the temporary construction easement. I just won't even charge you for it back because I'm more concerned about something else. That, that does happen. Uh, there are, obviously, there's documents that have to be drafted, you know, some things like that when there's donations of land. I mean, it has to be done freely. They have to sign off saying that, you know, that they're doing it freely and not being coerced and things like that. But yeah, there's a lot of stuff that the, when a K-DOP project is done, especially around right of way, you know, they have a, like a, almost a thirty-page manual that every property owner gets, not to mention us. Uh, and it kind of spells out exactly what the process is. And they don't like you to deviate too much. And we have to document. One of the benefits of a right of way agent, every time they make contact with that person, they have to document. I mean, whether it's a call or not, the message, had an in-person who was there. So that documentation, I, I did one of our right of ways homes where we just had about four or five properties. And I mean, by the time we got done, the folders were an inch thick. Cause every time you had contact, it was, you had to, you know, you had to put it together. So with that, I will step aside. I think we have a motion in a second.
Yep, we have a motion in a second. Will the clerk please call roll?
Bishop?
Yes.
Malot?
Yes.
Shriver?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Adam?
Yes.
All right. Item number five, consider ordinance ten fifty-one regarding amendments to the maximum speed limits on select streets in the city of Edwardsville.
I will take this one as well. I'm, I'm sure, uh, uh, Public Works Director will assist me. Uh, I'm going to give some background. I know a lot of this is in the memo, so I won't try to, to beat this up. But, uh, we were here about a month ago. The discussion originally was, we have this new section of road. It was, it is forty-five miles an hour. It was posted that way, except when we got to the south end of it. And they posted it to transition to thirty-five. But that section from roughly Speaker Road till just before you get to the curves, down by Kansas Avenue is technically forty-five. So part of our problem was we had a, you know, an area that was posted improperly. So we, we covered or took those signs out, but it created some discussions around, well, if that portion of the road is like the rest of the road farther south, why isn't it thirty-five? Why is it forty-five? So, so we had a long discussion about that. And so what we did internally and with our engineer was said, well, let's look at the, the road from K thirty-two to I seventy. So the entire corridor, which actually includes a hundred and tenth street, Edwardsville Drive and Fourth Street, because as you all know, it changes names as you go. So we broke that, and, and I've given you the background about statutes and those types of things. And I'm happy to answer questions if we need to. Basically, the statute says if you're going to adjust the speed limit above thirty miles an hour, so every urban, every urban road is automatically set at thirty. So urban roads are thirty, highway roads are fifty-five within cities. Anything you want to do to raise that, alter that, there's basically statute says you've got to do a traffic analysis. But some people take that to mean you got to go hire engineer and do a big traffic plan. Others say, you know, you can do it with local law enforcement. Uh, we're kind of in the middle, right? We, we're kind of using both, all of our resource. But we broke this sections up into five areas. The first section is the new area from basically I seventy down to Speaker. Then we go from Speaker to, uh, Kansas Avenue, should say, it says termination of Fourth Street. It's actually Edwardsville Drive. Uh, we then went, uh, Edwardsville Drive from basically the whole section, which is the largest section of the road from down Kansas Avenue to Shawnee Drive. So it's kind of through the curve. So you, you know, you make the curves. Section four is down to where it connects to Fourth Street, which is roughly where a hundred and fourth street comes down by the school. Uh, and then the last section is Fourth Street. So just kind of try to break it down into those sections. Uh, again, that first section is the new section. From a design standpoint, it went from the two-lane rural, like the rest of the road. We took down the hills, gave better sight visibility. It's four-lane divided from a, from a design. It was designed to carry up to fifty thousand average daily trip. So that means, you know, for you, if you had a house, you generally do ten or twelve a day because you go to work, you come home from work, go to school, back, or every one of those is a trip. Uh, it was designed around a fifty mile an hour design speed. So again, that's related to curves, it's related to hills, visibility, and with a posted limit of forty-five, which again, was the prior speed limit. So they didn't change the speed limit, they made it safe. The next section is that from where it tapers down to, uh, Kansas Avenue, as we typically say. Most of that road is forty-five. Uh, the curb goes down to thirty-five. But as you'll recall, we had some issues with our ordinance. So we set it all, you know, to bring that thirty-five farther north. And then when we passed the next STO, we forgot to do that. And so we have that area in kind of nomad slant that we showed before. But predominantly, that road is forty-five. But if you look at it, it's like the rest of the road. You have, you know, twenty driveways coming in at one business, fairly narrow, twenty feet. Uh, I will say Public Works has been doing a great job of trying to clear back the brush from the road and the trees, which gives you better visibility, uh, which certainly helps. It's from, from traveling and from safety. from traveling and from safety, et cetera. You then have the curved area, which again, is thirty-five, and then, uh, as I said, you you continue down the hill. We pulled data, uh, speed data, so as you know, we have our, one of our trailers has radar on it, and so we set it up in a couple of areas. Uh, the first one, we basically write where the transition's at, we had it out there for about a week. As you see, the daily speeds ran from around thirty to thirty-nine miles an hour, so as you're either coming south or going north from the transition. So even though it's posted forty-five, traffic was generally going in that range. Uh, we did have a speed of fifty-five point nine-two. I don't know if the boys in blue found that car when it went that fast or not, but it's a possibility. Uh, but but most people were traveling within the speed limit, right? So, uh, we also went farther north and did a a one-day study up towards the the roundabout, just to see with the new section, what people were doing. Again, they were basically traveling within the speed limit. Um, we looked at citations. I know people often think there's a lot of citations written on that road. In reality, uh, there's less than one a week for the full stretch of that road, and if I was a guessing man, just by driving like everybody else and seeing, it's generally that downhill section, that's where people tend to let their speeds get really above the speed limit. Uh, on the speed tickets, uh, those that were issued were generally fifteen or better over, so the average was forty-five, fourteen and a half. But as you can see, some people are well about that. So people generally are traveling at the posted speed limit within the sections that are there. And then the last one's accidents, and we don't necessarily, just the way our databases are set up, have really ability to to identify those without going and pulling a lot of manual data. You know, over the, since two thousand and seven, they've had ninety-seven accidents. Most of those were road conditions. I think as you may, some of you may remember, we had one year where we probably had twenty or thirty accidents, mainly due to ice, uh, on the roads. Uh, the good thing about when we rebuild these roads and we clear the trees back, it really allows the sun to get to the road, and we tend not to see accidents in those new sections, partially because of the road and you have a curb, but but also because you have the clearing of that, of the brush and things like that, which if the sun can't get to the road, even if you put ice or put salt on it, things like that, it won't melt as quickly as if the sun's on it, it's just just that clear. So overall, uh, you know, that's kind of the the history there. Uh, our recommendation, there was one other thing we found during this, just by chance, when we did Kansas Avenue, uh, so from Ninety-fourth Street, which is kind of our eastern city limits, and I, it says ninth, but but ninety-fourth typo, to Hundred and Second Street, so it makes the turb curve there, that road was designed and posted for thirty-five miles an hour, but back in the day, it was thirty, and apparently we just never picked it up. It's been thirty-five for, I don't know, ten years or better, uh, and it just isn't in our code of ordinances, so this ordinance, if adopted, would clean that up as well. So it just, it's already posted thirty-five, we're not changing anything, we're just making sure it's in the in the. So our recommendation is that we would, uh, uh, reduce the speed uh, where it transitions from four lanes to two lanes, so that's about six hundred feet north of Speaker, so that's where you're going four lanes down to two, and the remainder of the road would be thirty-five miles an hour until you get to, you merge with with Fourth Street, and then it slows down to twenty-five as you're going into the signal, which is the current speed limit. So the only portion we're really touching is basically Speaker Road to a little bit north of Kansas Avenue, we're reducing that from forty-five to thirty-five. Everything else would basically stay the same. That's what the ordinance says. But again, when we adopt ordinances, we have to adopt the whole section. Happy to answer questions. I know there was different concerns, and so happy to answer any questions you all may have.
And so, Mike, this would clean up both where the, uh, numbers or signage was off on Hundred and Tenth Street and that Kansas Avenue as well, is that right?
Correct.
Our Meta-Mayor, make a motion that we approve ordinance number ten fifty-one.
Yeah, the motion in a second. Will the clerk please call roll?
Bishop?
Yes.
Malot?
Yes.
Shriver?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
All right, on to item number six, consider acquisition of a Bad Boy Renegade gasoline mower for the Edwardsville Parks and Recreation Department.
Zach is taking this one. Double duty.
Baron Counsel, it's before you, is a request from the Parks and Rec Department to purchase a Bad Boy mower. Uh, cost for the proposed mower is eleven thousand four hundred and sixty-six dollars. Uh, to give you a little bit of a background, right now, the Parks Department uses the twenty-fifteen John Deere mower. Last fall, or I should say, early last winter, that mower broke down. Uh, we needed to get that fixed. Uh, we got that fixed, so it is operational, but it is pretty close to the end of its useful life, especially as a primary mower at the parks. Um, we, uh, our Parks and Rec, uh, maintenance worker, John Odom, did a lot of research on this, and his recommendation was to move forward with the purchase of a Bad Boy. The kind of three items that he highlighted for this particular model was a, uh, A, the suspension in the seating, so it's very very rocky, or I shouldn't say rocky, but it's not a smooth ride when you're mowing over at the at the park. There's a lot of, it's, this is kind of bumpy terrain out there, so it'll rattle teeth a little bit. So there's a workers' comp issue there, you know, or concern where our our equipment needs to take care of our people adequately. Uh, the Vanguard motor, uh, based on his research, that's a pretty, uh, top-of-the-line mower, uh, excuse me, motor. Uh, this particular model from Feldman's Farm and Home would include a three-year warranty on that motor as well. And the third is a kind of a rubber brace piece between the 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 mowing deck and the rest of the mower that helps, you know, to the, to the point about the rattling. Um, we've had to have this mower serviced before because of the, you know, how bumpy it gets, this brace piece of it, it's it's unique to the Bad Boy, kind of prevents some of that, that that pieces from clanging into each other and, you know, having to bring it into the shop to get that repaired. Uh, when we looked it up, the, uh, Renegades were not included in any of the purchase cooperatives that we have, so typically for an item like this, um, we go with Sourcewell or HAC or some other group through Mark who's done all the bidding, and so they've got competitive pricing. For whatever reason, the Ra- the Renegade models aren't included in those cooperative purchase agreements, so what we did was take the specs from the Renegade and that the staff recommended, and sent that to, uh, Coleman and Heritage Tractor, but who we are vendors who we've worked with uh, to get some of those other older pieces of equipment from your Sourcewells and your HACs, that can you replicate these specs the best you can, and what you, what if you got that's included in the purchasing cooperative that we're currently a part of, and their recommendations, um, respectively, were the John Deere, uh, Z ninety-seven, and then a Skag Cheetah. Both of those priced out, as you can see, uh, two thousand dollars, at least two thousand dollars more expensive than the Feldman's model. So in this instance, we've got a piece of equipment over ten thousand dollars, which would typically require a, a bidding process, but because the cooperative purchasing agreement has kind of already done that for us, um, we use that as our base and essentially solicited quotes for these like pieces of equipment. Again, coming in two thousand dollars more expensive, uh, we, uh, speaking with the city manager and our and our Parks and Rec staff, we want to go ahead and waive that requirement for the competitive, uh, competitive pricing, because we kind of have the, kind of have the data there already, that's already been collected, and the Bad Boy model is coming in cheaper. So with that, if you have questions, um, we'd recommend purchase, moving forward with this purchase of the Renegade model for the Parks and Rec Department. We'd still keep the John Deere as kind of our backup mower. Um, we kind of thought about, you know, maybe we can shift around some other pieces of equipment, but probably within a year, our mowers are, you know, they're getting, we don't, I think our newest mower, motor, or, excuse me, mower is twenty eighteen, and it takes, you know, between mowing and weed eating, I mean, you're out at the park doing that work for ten hours, so it gets a lot of use over at the park, so we'd probably be in the market for a new mower. Uh, probably, I wouldn't be surprised if, before the end of this year anyway, one if one just completely shut down, it was out of commission. Uh, so with that, with the research done by our staff, we brought forth the Renegade as our option to choi- or our preferred choice. So if you have any questions, I'd entertain those now, and if not, oh, yes, sir?
Uh, you forgot number four, it's made in the USA.
There you go.
Is that Bad Boy engine, is that diesel or gas?
It's gas, it's gasoline.
The John Deere circuit that we have, and as well as the, uh, uh, the Kubota has served as well, just seven years of, you know, all the time usage, and, you know, I mean, that's, for us, that's a, that's a pretty healthy life. I realize in the home environment, where you use it once a week, maybe, but it's been used, you know, pretty much every single working day, some, you know, loading on trailers and moving it off. So I know you know with the, you've got lots of grass to take care of out there, so I'm sure.
I was thinking that Bad Boy, though, especially the Renegade, it has a built-in suspension.
Correct. Correct, that's that that rubber bracing piece.
Isn't there a strapping kit that's available for that?
I, I would have to look. That's not currently included in this recommendation, but if there's an attachment that we might think would be helpful, then we'd certainly take a look at it.
Mm-hmm. Any, any challenge with service?
No, Feldman services these, so, or or have vendors that would do that.
Mainly, we do, like, the light servicing we do, our guy, you know, as far as oil change filters, fluids, those types of things. You know, typically, if there's something else that we've had work done, uh, at Coleman's on different equipment, just because of proximities or things of that nature, so.
And just another quick note, so we are out for bid right now on that kind of citywide mowing package. Uh, we haven't got any in yet, we'll open up those bids next Monday, and I know at least two firms will submit for that, but the park and the section of trail behind the park and behind Herb is not part of that package. It's, we, we need to be kind of doing that, because we need to be a little bit more nimble on the schedule to get out there, so we can have, be ready for games and all that kind of work. So that package, we'll come back to the council, probably at our next meeting to look at, but that will not include mowing of the city park or the section of trail behind.
I'll make a motion that we, uh, purchase the mower.
Second. Give a motion in a second. Will the clerk please call roll?
Bishop?
Yes.
Malot?
Yes.
Shriver?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Thanks so much.
On to item seven, the city manager report.
Uh, I don't really have anything to add here. I noticed we didn't have Public Works, we do have one Public Works item, so I'll, I think I'll defer over to Dustin. Dustin, he's still, I think he's kind of half awake, half asleep, he has this event coming up sometime in the next forty-eight hours, he's getting prepared for it. He hopes, and he hopes in the next forty-eight.
Get your mic up.
But, uh, as part of what we were doing on Ninety-Eighth Street, uh, we did some additional, just kind of research, and we just want to kind of bring it, there's no action needed, just kind of bringing up the date on, on potentially expanding that design of that project.
I didn't get anything in our report there to Zach, but we haven't been doing a lot but plowing snow and fixing stuff that breaks when you plow snow, um, which is ongoing process, but the guys are doing a good job, I think, and everybody's helping out on that front. Also, I didn't mention either that, uh, I've been trying to finish all my little tasks, because I can't procrastinate anymore, because tomorrow might be the day that I don't get to come back for a little bit, but uh, anyway, um, I did want to mention that the sewer, um, location thing started on Tues- Tuesday of last week, I think it was. Um, so they're kind of starting to collect that on that, if you'll see the surveyors running around, that's what they're doing. Um, just a note that we were talking about there, uh, that Mike wanted me to bring up, was we were discussing some options just to look into extending the Ninety-Eighth Street project, and just kind of wanted to bring it up to you guys, uh, think about it. I guess discuss with staff here in the next few weeks, kind of what, uh, what we might want to do if we do want to pursue something. So when they did that survey on that project, they did the geotechnical boring all the way from the, uh, K thirty-two to the city limit, so um, there is some data on that. They did a center line on the survey, uh, so they kind of have some general knowledge of the the terrain. Uh, not a real in-depth survey like they would eventually do if we moved farther. And and the reason that I kind of started looking at it was, uh, it probably won't happen, but sometimes if the bid come in low on another project, we might be considering trying to get the Mark Committee to consider adding on to our project. Um, the UG just got them to do that on a trail project, um, which was kind of unprecedented a little bit, and, uh, so we thought maybe if we had some of these things ready to go, possibly we could convince them to do something extra for us. Again, that means that the bids come in low, and with this current market, that's a very big guess, I guess, that it might not even happen, but we just kind of wanted to be looking into that. So, and that would extend, and also, so the reason that I picked this section from Kansas Avenue to Swarts, if you look at that section, there's a lot of wide-open fields, um, just in, it's like a, I can't remember now if it's a quarter mile or half mile, I think it's a half mile on that. Um, but there's several big fields on either side of the road where the right-of-way acquisition, the grading, it causes a lot less interference with homeowners and stuff. There is some po- some population, some housing density there on the north end, where we'll get into some conflict with a couple driveways. But like I said, once you get past that point, it does open up for some easier gradings, because, and it's also flatter through there too, so it opens up for some easier grading and some easier right-of-way acquisition, kind of made it a good place where maybe we could consider extending the project and getting some more road improvement done without a lot of, without a lot of additional interference. Um, so I don't know what.
So what, so what we're looking at really is, so we have a contract with BHC Roads, right, that's doing the design, full design of Ninety-Eighth Street from Kansas Avenue to the north. And what we've asked them to do was to kind of put together a package to maybe look from Kansas Avenue south to Swarts. So we would, similar to what we did when we did, uh, the Riverview Crossroads project, if you remember, we were originally kind of just right there, and we said we may want to extend farther, uh, Hundred and Second Street, I I mean, I know there's been a lot, you know, we did design work for Hundred and Second Street, so we have the design, that was really the intention of that, was to have the design work in the right-of-way required, even though we might not be able to do the physical construction at this time, but then if funds come available, whether it's through the bidding process comes in better, if there's ARPO funds, I mean, I think there's gonna be a lot of funding over the next number of years around infrastructure, right? And I think the better we're prepared and ready to go, the better we'll be in place to try to take advantage of that. So I think our original contract was around four hundred and twenty-six, seven thousand for that, and right now, we have an estimate of about a hundred and eighty thousand, and I will tell you, even on Hundred and Tenth Street project, we came in around twenty thousand under on the engineering design project. So they think, you know, it is an estimate, generally speaking, they come in under their estimate, one or two percent. But we just want to kind of tee that up, see if there's any thoughts about, you know, maybe looking at that. We have some funding mechanisms, and we have, you know, bond, you know, we, we have money in Ninety-Eighth Street, we know we don't have enough money to build it, we'll we'll have to rat the bond for the construction piece of it, but we do have funds over there that potentially available. We did set aside bond funds for general road improvements, right, and Ninety-Eighth Street's one of those. All of our major roads can be, be touched on, potentially, uh, you know, special street fund, so we'll come back with the, with more details. We kind of want to just put it out there to say, is that something we even want us to be, you know, thinking about it? I mean, I think Ninety-Eighth Street ultimately, right, get it rebuilt from end to end, and the more we can do it in, you know, sections, the more sense it makes. So it's probably not something we would go, be ready to go to bid to build in the next twelve, twenty-four months, but we would be in the cross, be in a place that if funds came available, or, you know, debt financing, whatever mechanism, we would have that ready to go. So that, that's what we're thinking.
Would it be something you would consider on the STP project, possibly too, in the future? I mean, we have more calls for those projects coming up.
Right.
We'd have more discussion about all that, but it could go on something like that, uh, also. So I guess we were just trying to get it prepared, or at least see if, um, my thinking was even aligning with everybody else's thinking on if that's a section that we might look at. So I guess if you're out driving around and look at it and kind of get back to us and just discuss it, but.
Hundred and Tenth, Edwardsville Drive, that corridor, right, and this Ninety-Eighth Street corridor, as far as north-south corridors, are really probably our two. primary corridors as far as there, I mean, I'm not discounting a 94th or 102nd, but I mean, you just think about how they go, et cetera, I mean. But those two, you know, we've invested, we've already invested in both of them, or in the process of investing in them. Obviously Kansas Avenue, so just as we're trying to, you know, think about that. Most of our roads in the south are really maintenance, right? I mean, we're not, we don't really have anything to, that we go out and just rebuild lightly. I mean, there's some residential streets potentially, but they are major streets in the south of K32 are pretty well in place, where they're going to be, the width they're going to be, and it's more maintenance.
So is the goal for us to maybe have the council drive that section over the next week or so, just send you an email, you know, our thoughts on it?
Yeah, yeah, I think so, just communicate with us, kind of if you think that that's something we would want to put together. It's 185,000 estimated for the design, for the full-blown design of that section. And that would give us our, what right-of-way limits we would need, what grading limits, so we can start talking to homeowners and stuff about. This is going to come to this point, we might need to do some driveway things or something there. I will say the culvert, right after you come off of Kansas Avenue to the south, it needs replaced, there's a hole in it, it has a small hole. It's not a dangerous hole, it's only a two-foot diameter culvert, but it's enough of a hole that it gets a pothole there once in a while, and we have to fill it, but it's not terrible at the moment, but that is a cost that will come as a project, probably depending on if it's contracted or not. $30,000, $40,000 project, maybe $20,000. That would be included in the project as well, so just kind of consider that.
We're just trying to think about how we continue projects, right? I mean, we're always in the, we're always thinking about what's the project three, four, five, six years down the road, because it takes that. He's talking about, you know, the next round of STP funding requests is for fiscal, you know, federal fiscal years 2025 and 2026. But those will probably be going out this summer to submit in fall, and some of these kind of things, the better we're prepared. When you've got, it, it may not be, we may not do full development, we may say, hey, we want to go to field check plans, that's kind of like, you know, that gives us enough to go maybe acquire the right-of-way, get the field check plans. But again, the more we can kind of be proactive in some of these bigger capital projects, it helps. So we just, we're just looking at that as we, oh, we've got this, you know, we know we're going to have to replace this cross pipe. And down here, this one's not bad, but probably going to need to be, and, you know, we're going to end up with these patches, does it make sense to maybe just rebuild another section of road? We tend to go by intersections.
Is there any kind of an inventory on, on like little bridges and culverts that we have, and how long have a lot of them been neglected?
We have an inventory of all of our stormwater, so about three years ago.
I'm kind of thinking like the one that we did at the end of 102nd on River View, that one, I'm kind of thinking that if we actually had somebody go look at those and climb in.
Every one of them.
I'm just curious about. I had an old timer tell me there's one at the bottom of every hill. So if you think about that, there's a lot of them.
No, no, we have, we do have an inventory, like even in the developed neighborhood, right, inlet boxes, the cross pipe.
I was thinking more along the lines of the Delaware Township ones that, you know, somebody might not even know it exists, and you drive over it every day.
And there are probably some of those that we think we got, and there might be some out there in the field that quite honestly, both ends are covered up and nobody knows it's there. I mean, I, I know even when we did Kansas Avenue, at Kansas and 98th Street, there was a pipe there. I would do about it, I mean, it was collapsed in, covered up, and they're digging, like, what's this? It was a stormpipe. I mean, it was there, it hadn't been really functioning probably, but it was, it was there.
And we do have, we use those stormpipes, or I use those stormpipe, that inventory that BHC took a few years back, I think it's 2018, but to kind of start tackling what ones we need to replace first, kind of come up with a long-term capital plan on those. I've got BHC doing some surveying on the one south of Swartz Road on 102nd, because there's just, it's old, very old concrete box, and it's got some, some things that if we don't stay on top of, that, you know, cause more problems, but.
I'm just curious about.
Yeah, we're pretty aware of where those are.
We just wanted to kind of bring it up, and we just kind of got behind on some of that, so just wanted to give Public Works an opportunity, so.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Thanks.
Is that all that you had, or?
Yeah, I don't really have anything else. You know, I, I did note in here about Evergy, I did meet with them based on the, the public hearing and the feedback and some of those things, and I think they took that to heart and are trying to at least look at that, see how they might, what's the best response, and felt like that's why we said let's push it back to our next meeting. Again, it's not a public hearing when you all, and the public hearing and all that's already happened. But we want to make sure that the parties have the available information, so they, they were, you know, they wanted to have an opportunity to try to get some of that together. Mayor may not change the outcome, but at least gives us, gives the opportunity for us to have all the facts, so.
Very good. Zach, did you have anything? Okay. The chiefs aren't here, did police or fire have anything for us tonight? No, okay, and Lisa, did you have anything? All right, council comments, Councilman Adams, did you have anything for tonight?
I have nothing.
Councilman Bishop?
Yes, Michael, what are they doing on 100th Street, 100, River, 110th Street, south of I-70? They put silt fence up on the west side of the road today.
No, that's the sewer.
Is it, okay, oh, yeah, okay, okay. I was like, yeah, so that sewer line, they'll be direct, I didn't know they'd gotten up there already, but yeah, so that sewer line to go from there west to the back of that property, and then Manhole Force Main to the south under River View. And then it goes back west a little bit to the proposed lift station on the Skidell property. That is all it did cost, by the way.
Councilman Malot?
I think I'm good tonight, thank you guys.
Councilman Shriver?
I am. I did have one comment or question, maybe on the city manager report under the police department, not to put you under this. Sorry. Edwardsville Police Department oh, command staff members from both Edwardsville and Bonner Springs Police Departments met this week to establish certain unified policing strategies. Is that something you want to elaborate on, or is that something the chief can tell us about?
Well, I can speak to it when I was there. We discussed potential interdepartmental training opportunities, things like that.
Okay. Not policing, just policing strategies, that's kind of training, or?
Yeah, we, we discussed opportunities to train. Organizations our size, we try to maximize our training opportunities. We do send our folks to train our teams around the back road, but we have instructors in certain fields that would benefit more of these organizations, and we invite other organizations to come train with us to give you their perspectives, train on different folks, utilize different equipment.
Interesting, thank you.
Councilman Scott?
Just one thing, and I understand about the Evergy substation project is probably going to come to us next two weeks or shortly thereafter. I've just seen some public comments and some concerns, some concerns about eminent domain, some land issues, or just, so I think for us, or for me, when they do come, you know, it's, it, we need to know, you know, how that's, that project's going to affect the landowners from anywhere in our city, quite honestly.
I, I will say, you know, and we have to be current, right, because we, we have a process planning, as you all know, especially, you know, they do the public hearing, they take the public input. This is a special use permit, so it has a couple extra pieces to it, but they, you know, they're going to have the public hearing and then forward a recommendation. And we're all supposed to stay relatively neutral in, in process, so you know, I don't want to say things outside of, of those things. But I, but I will say, I think what we, what I expressed to them specifically is that there, there are just several items that people have concerns about, questions about, et cetera. And they really need to be more transparent about that, right? So I realize we're talking about a substation, but people, right, I mean, where you put those has a lot of impact of what kind of poles and wires have to get to, right? And why we're not necessarily considering that specific, but it does impact it, right?
I mean, if you, if you, you know, if you move it way far to the east, well, you got to still get power way over there with big poles and then back, and
and I just said, you know, it seemed to me, the feedback I heard was it, it's not so much the details of the specific item, it's these unknowns of what happens around it, what happens in the future, how does the power get to it, how does the power go from it? What's the service areas, right? Because it serves a bigger area. Those types of questions, I.
And that's what we, that's what I'd like to see is the details.
And I think that's what I expressed to them, that's what I'm hoping that they come back and are able to fill in some of those, those items for you. So that you could, you know, again, at the end of the day, you have to make, you know, you have to make certain decisions around SUPS. And you need all the data, information you can have, make a good decision, so that's, that is the attempt of what I spoke to you about.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
That's it.
Just a quick update on our Edwardsville mobile pantry we had last weekend. Not sarcastically, it was probably the warmest 10 degrees I'd ever been out in, the sun was shining, we didn't have any wind, so it, it really was perfect. It, it ended up just great. Councilman Shriver's always there and a great help to us, we had a record number of people that we assisted this month. We served two, I'm sorry, 20,466 pounds of food to over 600 people that came through, including our local food pantry and our seniors at the high-rise. So just wanted to thank all of our volunteers and organizations that helped with that, we couldn't do it without them. And that's all for tonight.